Yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah.
Okay. I'd like to call the January eighth.
Hi.
Twenty twenty.
Trying to call the meeting order.
Oh. I thank you. I'd like to call the January eighth, twenty twenty four East Line Board of Education Regular Meeting to order. For those of you who could stand, if we can stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
Into the Republic of America.
Nation.
Under God. In this is all with everything just as strong.
Okay. So we're gonna see how this goes. I hope it goes okay. Trying to zoom. Uh, I do not plan on doing this at hopefully ever again, but hopefully this will be just a one timer, but um. First order of business is public comment. Do we? Is there any public comment? And any public comment? Okay, hearing none, we will close public comment and we will move on. We have a number of minutes to approve. Uh, first is from the December fourth. Board of Education Regular Meeting. Any? Changes, comments?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the December fourth meeting. It's Jamie. Thank you.
Any other, any further comment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain?
Aye. Got it.
That passes hand up.
And did you get Jill was on, Jamie? Did you get Jill?
I see Jill.
Okay, good. Thanks. Um, the next. Set of minutes we have is from the December fourteenth Board of Education Special Meeting. Any further comment?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the December fourteenth Special Board of Ed Meeting. It's Jamie.
Okay.
Second by Kate.
Further comment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain?
Obstain.
You don't have to, because you are in the minutes as being present.
Okay.
At the end of the mid minutes, it says that you voted on things in the meeting, so you're there and you're sworn in, so you don't have to. It's up to you.
I see aye.
You're gonna ask.
Ask, yeah.
Excellent. Okay, and the last minutes we have to approve are from the December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three Committee of the Whole Budget Workshop Meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the December fourteenth Committee of the Whole Budget Meeting. Jamie, and also Kate.
Further comment? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Okay, minutes passed. Okay, next, um, we have a special recognition. We have an Eastline Viking Valor Award, and I'll pass it on to. Jeff and probably Kevin.
Yeah, we're gonna turn it right over to Kevin to start, and Deb's here as well, Kevin.
Thank you. Evening, everybody. Kevin Markum, the Athletic Director of the High School and the Middle School. Um, one of the things that drew me to Eastline when I applied for the position was a long list of successful veteran coaches that were leading their teams here in Eastline. Throughout the ECC and the state, Eastline has had a reputation of having high-level, well-respected coaches that push their teams to accomplish great things. Thought unattainable while always doing it the right way. At the top of that list is. Person we are recognizing today, Paul Christiansen, affectionately known as Wally. Towards the latter part, later part of the season this year, I asked Wally as he was approaching the four hundred win plateau. To put together his history, his coaching history and his accolades, so that I could put something together for our weekly social media posts that are now very famous. As expected, it was very impressive and very long. Did you all know that in addition to being the Eastline Boy Soccer Coach, Coach Christiansen coached at Eastline Varsity Baseball for five years? JV Baseball for five years, Assistant Basketball, Boys Basketball for five years. Assistant Track Coach for a season, JV Soccer for two seasons, and he was also Unified Basketball Coach for three seasons. Then, of course, his longtime boy soccer coaching career is what he's most famously known for. That career includes thirty-six years as our boys. Head Soccer Coach. Career record, four hundred five victories, one hundred ninety-one losses, sixty-seven ties. Co-Champ, Class L Co-Champ in two thousand, State Co-Champ in two thousand two. Class L Runner-Up, eighty-nine, oh-three, and oh-eight. His teams have made thirty-four CIEC appearances in his thirty-six years. Thirteen regular season championships, four tournament championships that started in two thousand ten. He also received several coaching awards over those years, included being inducted into the Eastline Hall of Fame in two thousand seventeen. In addition to that, Coach has also served on several state-level soccer boards, including serving as an Executive Board. CHSCA member since two thousand fourteen. And then there was this season's magical. Record, uh, team. Twenty-one, one, and one record, school record. The team outscored their opponents seventy-seven to thirteen on the year. They're regular season and ECC Tournament Champions. They captured the school's first outright state championship with a thrilling three-two win over Notre Dame West Haven at Dillon Stadium in Hartford. On November eighteenth. He was named the Connecticut Soccer Coaches Association Class Double L slash L Coach of the Year this year. And he also earned, was recognized, being recognized as the two thousand twenty-three. Boys Fall New England Regional High School Coach of the Year for Large Public Schools by the United Soccer Coaches Association. When talking about Coach Christiansen to another ECC AD a few weeks ago, the AD responded with. I've never heard one person say anything bad about him. That says it all about Coach. He challenges his team. He has high standards. He holds his players accountable, while doing it the right way. I introduce you to Coach Paul Christiansen.
I tell you, that state tournament game was the best soccer game I've ever seen. I think that's for sure.
Not too. Came out the right way.
Great hair. Yeah, Wally actually was my basketball coach.
Oh, my gosh.
Here in high school. No, it didn't work out for me, but hey. I was proud to play, uh, under his leadership. So, uh, while we want to recognize you, um, with the Spiking Valor and recognition of exemplary coaching athletic leadership. Uh, for these high schools and leadership, you know, is a key leader for our district and a great coach, you know, great individual. So, congrats.
I appreciate it. It's an honor for sure, but I've been blessed by great players. Great coaches that I worked with, supportive administration, and the community. Without all that, you don't get this. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, yeah. Excellent. All right. Congrats. I know you guys are heading back to basketball.
Congratulations, Wally.
Thanks.
Okay, uh, moving on to special reports, and I think I see that we have both Mahira and Daylin here. As the high school representative.
Okay.
Sorry, Daylin.
Um, the extravaganza was enjoyed by the student body. Um, two hours of free activity, and then after was the performance that was led by students and faculty. Um, a lot of people enjoyed the performance that we put on. Then they enjoyed the free time, which usually comes sort of like. Uh, time in the gym, you can play basketball, gingerbread, reading, games. All like free activity. Um, and that was a half day. Some people went, some people didn't. Um, the next big thing is midterms are next week. Um, sixteenth to the eighteenth, there's two exams a day, and then the nineteenth and the twenty-second. Um, is just one exam, leaving room for makeups. Um, from what I've heard, there's a, there's a good amount of stress because there's a lot of tests and quizzes the week before. So. But MLK Day, we have off, so a lot of people are probably gonna use that time to study. Um, Christmas break, a lot of people enjoyed. Um. And then, like I said, uh, the fifteenth is Martin Luther King Day, so we have that off. Winter Ball is February the third, and that's, um, gonna be ran by the Junior Senate. Uh, February fifteenth is Junior College Planning Night. Freshman Emma Frisbee wins Poetry Out Loud, and then the runner-up was sophomore Skylar Scapeen. Uh, Cookie with the Clauses occurred with Pro, and there was a good turnout. Crew had the annual cookie sale, and they pretty much sold out. Junior Prom is scheduled for May eleventh at Port and Starboard. The Junior Senate is gonna meet the DJ at Port and Starboard, February twenty-fourth. To discuss plans, because he's also gonna be the DJ for Winter Ball.
So, now that it's twenty twenty-four, a lot of the senior events are coming up, so it's gonna have some. Work to plan for that. So, Senior Prom is set to be May twenty-fifth at the Mystic area. And originally, students were happy with that, because we wanted another venue, but, um, a lot of our Senate students visited during the Senior Prom last year just to decorate. Because they gave us the opportunity. They offered to pay us to decorate for them. I think we're gonna do that for you guys this year. But we really liked it, so we're happy about that, and it's a bigger space than the Water's Edge last year, and I know last year was really hot in there, so we're excited about that. Um, next thing is NHS is working to plan for the Lip Sync Battle. We haven't come up with a date yet, but we're still planning for that, and I know all the teams who participated last year that are continuing this year are excited, especially the girls' crew team. Since they won, and the girls' lacrosse team wants a rematch. Um, the senior class trip has been decided to be at Sportsplex. Um, on June fifth, and this place has a lot of sports courts, laser tag. Football, ice skating, so a lot of students are excited for that, and we were talking about it today, and. They decided about five hours are gonna be spent there, and the bus ride is about an hour. Um, food is to be determined. We're still thinking about it, and the prices also, we're still thinking about how that's going to work out. Um, the senior dinner dance is June sixth at Port and Starboard, which students are very excited about, because that's kind of the senior event that students look forward to the most, since it's only seniors and no underclassmen can be there. Um, I know originally there wasn't a set plan for this, but now that it's booked, we're really excited for that. Um, and then seniors are wrapping up college applications, which has been really stressful. Um, besides rolling applications, I'm pretty sure most deadlines are finished by January fifteenth. And a lot of students are beginning to commit to schools, which is exciting. And the stress for that mainly right now is FAFSA, because it just opened, but it's kind of down, so no one can really do anything. And then January tenth is FAFSA Completion Night, so I don't know how that's gonna go, but. And then hopefully soon, it's sports conditioning is gonna start for spring sports. I do lacrosse, and I know that's starting up, I think, at the end of the month, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Great, and any questions? Well, thanks.
Yes.
Yeah. Go ahead.
It's just out of curiosity, I, and if you have maybe updated the board in the past, uh, I apologize, uh, I'm a new member. Uh. I know a lot of students spend a lot of time preparing for CMEA, uh, auditions. And I don't know if, if the, the final concerts have happened. Do you know, uh, how many students qualified or? Because those are, those are hard auditions and, hey, you know. And students prepare a lot, a lot. I mean, it's okay if you don't have.
I don't really know what that is.
I, I, I'd be interested if.
I don't, I'm not really familiar with that.
Neither am I, sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't know if you.
I don't know the number, but we can find out. It's Connecticut Music Educators, um, in physical states for music. Um, I don't really know if all of that is completely done yet, but we can find out.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's just, yes, because I know students spend a lot of time preparing and auditioning, so. Good to know how, how they did.
Thanks. Good, good question. Any other questions?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Please.
Bye.
Selectment, Eric.
There's no selectment, okay. Okay, so, uh, that closes special reports and moves on to our consent agenda.
I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as shown. Jamie and Kate.
Okay, I, I couldn't hear the second, sorry. Great, thanks. Um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Consent agenda passes, so for those at home. Um. The first, there were three consent agenda items. The first one was to approve a donation from the Niantic Lions Charities, the Eastline High School Automotive Repair Program, in the amount of five hundred dollars. So, thanks, um, Niantic Lions, that really appreciate that, and, you know, they support a number of things for us and appreciate, um, all they do. Uh, the second was an approval of a, of a donation from the Town of Eastline High School Girls Lacrosse Program. I'm sorry, to the, from the Town of Eastline to the Eastline High School Girls Lacrosse Program, in the amount of two thousand dollars. Um, appreciate that, and it's, uh, you know, Phil runs a lot of. Different programs go through the town, and then it comes back to our lacrosse program, which is, which is great. And the third item is a. We, we already have a number of partnerships between Eastline and Salem Public Schools, and there's another, um, part of the partnership where. Um, our Security Director, Chris Olson, is going to help, um, with, with some security at the Salem Public Schools. Doesn't really change his. Uh, role here, but there's a little bit of help that he's gonna do and provide that assistance to Salem, so another. Um, place that we're able to. Uh, combine and partner with their, with the Salem School District. So, those are our three consent agenda items, and we'll move on to our discussion action. And the first discussion action item, we'll turn it over to Jeff for the Superintendent twenty-four, twenty-five budget presentation.
All right, thank you, Eric. You all received a binder, as you do each year, um. It was at your table, so, uh, under tab one is the, right, that we're gonna go through now. Uh, we will push out an electronic version of the binder tomorrow, so you'll have both a. Uh, hard copy as well as electronic version, so you can utilize whichever one you would like. Um, we will be pushing this out as well as the recorded version of this presentation onto YouTube tomorrow. I'll be sending a letter home to the parent community as well to inform them. I will put the link in, so, uh, our parents, our community members can see, uh. You know, the presentation if they would like, you know, more information on the budget, and then also, um, at least I've scheduled, uh, PTA events. So, we have all, I think, all of them scheduled, right? Yeah, so we've got those coming up between January and February, um, to go and spend some time talking about the budget at the PTA meetings. Um, something we wanted to get back to, uh, back to doing. So.
And, and Jeff, I'm sorry, just before you get started, so just to kind of. Our desired outcome of tonight is that you're going to present, we get the information. If we have some clarification questions, we'll ask some clarification questions, but it also, if we have deeper, more detailed questions to kind of provide. Those to you. After the meeting over the, over the week, which you can provide answer, then on the January twenty-second meeting, I think that's the next one, and then future ones, we'll have more time to. To have discussion and go through some of the Q and A. Is that, is that right?
That is exactly correct. Yeah, we're just pushing all the information out, uh, a lot of which to our workshops, you know, you've heard, but, uh, we'll kick off the discussions, uh, at the twenty-second. Uh, meeting for, you know, the deeper dive. But yeah, any questions that you have, you know, obviously, please email. It's kind of what we've done, you know, in the past that always helps, and then we can get back to you and answer those, um, as we see. And, uh, we'll see about Board of, been in touch with the Board of Finance, uh, as well, so they're aware of some of our dates. Um, I hope maybe some of them would be here this evening, but, um. We've been doing some other things, but they'll have access to the recording as well. I talked to Denise Hall about that today. So.
Great.
Okay, all right, let's, um, jump into the presentation. I'm gonna share my screen. Well, so, uh. It'll be running up, uh, up here. Folks up home can see it. Okay. All right, so twenty-four, twenty-five. Yes. Let me first start off. I just mentioned the budget workshops, just to recap, um, for more for our, our community. We've, we do a lot of work prior to this, this night. We had our workshop, uh, back in November, on November twentieth, that was the first workshop, um, and then Budget Workshop number two on December fourteenth. Um, I wanna really give kudos, you know, to the team, uh, the admin team, all of our staff members. They really work pretty quick out of the gate when the school year starts to be putting the school budgets together and pushing them up, uh, to Central Office, and then. Have to thank Mariana for, you know, it, it's, it's one thing to have a good finance director, it's another thing to have an amazing finance director, uh, and Mariana does a phenomenal job. Uh, so, thank you, you know, Mariana, for how quickly she puts things together, how thorough she is, uh, the work that happens between the workshops. We sit down, we cross-reference, and that's how we, we saw our percentage drop, because, you know, we catch things that might been dou- might have been doubled up between a school budget as well as a, um, you know, a department budget, or maybe something that was in Ann Lisa's or Kim's budget. Uh, so, that's how we cross-check, and that's the time we spend between the workshops. But again, kudos to Mariana for, uh, the work that she does, you know, with that. So, uh, always have to reflect back on our mission statement and our Board of Ed goals. Everything we do, every dollar we allocate, every dollar we spend. All, uh, surfaces around this mission statement and, um, those, those goals and those goal areas. Uh, I think we're proud of those goals. The board put a lot of hard work into those goals, uh, back in the summer. Um, and, uh, we are focused on those as we move to this year, and many of those will continue as they have done, um, for the, the previous year as well. Some of those were carryover. So, so make sure we allocate, uh, and, uh, understand, you know, our focus and what we always look back on. So, there's always a story to, uh, every budget. Every year, this is my eleventh year as Superintendent on eleven budgets, um, and there's been a story for every single budget. Um, the story this year, and we feel good about this, is in fact, it's, it's a fairly straightforward budget this year. Um, I know last year we had a lot of issues, because the, the, the percent increase was, was very high. Um, we are in a better place, uh, this year, as we talked about through, through the workshops. So, this budget is about, uh, maintaining programming as well as continuing to support, uh, our students and our staffs, and our staff through, uh, making sure that, uh, resources continue as well as. You know, the allocation of staff across, uh, each of our schools remains intact. Uh, also, we've done a lot of hard work on bringing in grant funding to help offset, so we'll talk about some of that grant funding and the difference, um, between last year and this year, and those dollars. So, we'll get there in just a minute. You saw this slide at the workshop. I just want to revert back to it, because it shows, um, the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, and then twenty-three, twenty-four, and then next year's. Um, what we had come out of the gate with, or initial, that's the red bar, versus what, uh, we approved at the town, so twenty-two, twenty-three. Uh, our initial out of the gate was a seven point zero three percent increase over the current year. The town approved a final three point six four at referendum. Remember last year, we were out of the gate at ten point one nine percent of an increase, very high. The town ultimately approved a six point eight zero percent increase at referendum. This year, as you remember at the workshops, we started off at six point eight nine, then at the December workshop, we brought forward the six point zero eight. Uh, you can see the reduction, which I mentioned, again, a lot of work by, uh, Mariana, the departments, and at least Kim, um, Crystal and everybody. Uh, we reduced that down by catching things and cross-referencing. So, the six point zero eight is where we're at, at the December workshop. And that's where we're, what we're bringing forward this evening. Uh, our current year operating budget is fifty-seven million, seven, eight, nine, eight, five, two. The proposed twenty-four, twenty-five operating budget, uh, is sixty-one million, three hundred, one thousand, five hundred and fifty-nine dollars. That is a proposed six point zero eight. Over the current fiscal year, again, lower than what we approved at, uh, last year at, at referendum, um, to, to start. So, uh, the drivers for that, uh, again, I had shared this slide at the workshop, um. Almost four and a quarter percent are salaries and employee benefits, on the two point five four, the one point six five. Uh, that averages or adds up to about four point, um, one nine. Uh, and then you can see, you know, the remainder of the items that, uh, make up the rest of the budget, uh, percent increase to get us to the six point zero eight. But, uh, in any, you know, operating school budget, district budget, uh, it's mostly salaries and benefits. That's broken down further. You can see this in previews at the workshop as well. I want to make sure the community had a chance to see the actual dollars associated with each of those, uh, amounts and the changeover, um, from the prior year. Which again, equates out to the six point zero, uh, eight. And then our fixed expenses, um, we always like to bring this forward, because it's an important slide. Okay, it's, so one of my devices ran into a problem and needs to restart, but whole her cough of. That, Grant, can you control that as well?
I cannot.
I'll get in, Jeff.
I'm restarting here. But the fixed expense slide, um, we show this every year, um, I read that number here, but I believe it's ninety-six point five percent, is that right? Yes, ninety-six point five percent of our overall is, you know, is fixed expenses, uh, contracts, um, things that we cannot, uh, we cannot change.
You are.
Yeah, let me log back in quick here, see if it should pop up. Have our.
I'm almost there.
Two-factor authentication. By the time you get there, it will be. It goes. Sorry, let me start. There we go, restore pages, okay.
I'm there.
We're back, I think. Let's see.
Okay.
I'm just gonna have to share my screen again, I think.
Are you logged back into?
Oh, you know what? I think I lost. No, I lost Zoom.
Okay.
It'll be, I'm counting on you.
Let me try.
I lost my Zoom connection.
Technology.
I tell you, that was strange.
Now we got.
You were at fixed expenses. Yeah. So again, you know, with that fixed expenses, while Annalise is pulling up that up, um, it's a small sliver of what we really have to work with as it pertains to, uh, flexibility and, uh, in dollars. Because most everything is, uh, it's contractually, uh, uh, related. All right, so if we go on to the next one, um. We talked a little bit briefly about this, uh, this scenario, this slide at the, the December workshop, some, an option that the board can consider. Um, and this is something we can talk more about, you know, on the twenty-second, or as we proceed through discussions, legislature discussions. In the six point zero eight percent increase, uh, insurance currently is at a ten percent increase. We left it there on purpose. Um, for us to have some discussions and wait a little bit longer to see what would happen with, uh, the state. Um, we're part of the state partnership plan, so our community, uh, knows, just as a reminder. Um, their recommendation is between a three and a seven percent increase for the coming year. Um. If we move that down to eight percent, you can see there'd be a savings of a hundred and fifty-two thousand, two hundred ninety-six dollars. Each percent is about seventy, seventy-two, uh, roughly seventy-two, seventy-three thousand. Uh, if we go lower, we'll kind of show you a, a slide where those decreases, um, on the next, uh, on the next slide. But, um, we could have savings there if we drop from ten percent down to eight percent, so that could bring our six point zero eight down. Additionally, and we're gonna go back and I'll show you the, um, elementary, um, uh, elementary, um, class size slide. Because we can sit everybody within the guidelines and through attrition, eliminate two elementary positions. We have some retirements, uh, nobody would lose their job. Um, and we could remove two positions and, uh, still, uh, have every, every class within those, those guidelines, um, from the chart, which we'll show you that in a second. So, those two things combined could bring you down, and again, this is something the board will have to discuss further, could bring you down to a five point four eight percent. I would not recommend any other further reductions. Um. That budget between the six point zero eight and the five point four eight, and again, health insurance, we'll see what happens. That budget between the six point zero eight and the five point four eight, and again, health insurance, we'll see what happens. It definitely could go lower. Uh, but I would not recommend any further staffing reductions or program reductions because it would have an impact. And uh the budget that we put forward will give us everything that we need uh forward. So with that health insurance piece, um. As you can go to the next. The next slide. So I mentioned the ten percent. Uh, we have the three percent, three percent to seven percent range. Um, we find out this month. Couple, another week or two, maybe.
The twenty-third is I have, we have another meeting.
Meeting with the state. So the state partnership plan, we'll get more information on the health insurance um numbers. So. Hopefully they are remaining within that range of three to seven or even, you know, I would hope that it would always be lower. But you can see the the scenario is if we go from the eight percent, which is a hundred and fifty-two thousand in savings. If you dropped it to seven percent, it would be two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and forty-four dollars in savings. And then six percent and five percent. So you can see the reduction scenarios there. So if you ultimately landed at five percent, it would save us three hundred and eighty thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars. So it's pretty hefty dollars when it comes to insurance. So let's hope that number does. Does come down, but we will, again, we won't know that until um. After, you know, we're going into February, even later, our final, a final budget number. So class size, uh, mention the elementary class sizes, mentioned through attrition, the potential for reducing. Um, two positions and not impacting anybody's job. Wanted to bring back the class size guidelines and charts. You can see grade K and one. We have our up to eighteen students in a class is the recommended for the board's regulation. Are in board's uh policy as guidelines. Grade two and three, up to twenty students in a class, and grade four, up to twenty-two. Uh, and then we've got um some narrative about the middle school, um, as well as, you know, a school component. If we go to that elementary enrollment slide, this is next years. We just rolled over our class, uh, our grade levels the next year. Um, remember Stacy Muscarella came and talked about the kindergarten um and how we formulate all of that, so those estimated kindergarten numbers are in there for next year. Every average class size uh is sitting within the range now. Ninety Center is on the cusp of kindergarten at seventeen point five, eighteen is kind of the cutoff. And you can see Flanders is at eleven. They're below the guideline. So there there could be some movement uh within there. Um, if we get a few more kids, we might have to come back to the table and have some further discussions. Um, but this, this right now, kindergarten specifically is. Every child that uh, you know, Stacy Muscarella knows about, um, and reaching out to daycare is rolling everything over. Uh, even students that are, say they're going to come, families that say they're gonna come, they might not. So um, that's still, obviously, we know kindergarten um remains something that we'll continue to watch and see where the numbers go. But just a snapshot, as of right now, that's where we land. And that's again with two staff uh positions reduced, one at Ninety Center and one at Flanders. Okay. Middle school, high school, you saw this too at the workshop. Just wanted to circle back, uh, really no change number-wise at the middle school. High school's got a little dip um with uh that bubble that had gone through. In the middle school, uh, we had some keeper reduction, a keeper reduction a couple of years back, it's at the high school now. Uh, so looking at nine, uh, he down to nine oh three. Let's talk about preliminary requests, and I want to emphasize uh again, especially for our. Our community and our our school and town community that these positions are all in the increase. Everything you see here totaling a hundred and ninety-six thousand, six hundred and thirty-one is in the. The six point zero eight percent increase over the current fiscal year. So I'm gonna have Kim in just a minute talk about the special education teacher, the V C B A piece. Uh, as well as the English, the E L L and M L uh teacher. Um, but I want to just draw your attention to the team leader stipends. The social worker, school psychologist, and speech pathologist. We have team leaders across our departments. Teacher that's leading their grade level, for instance. Um, we feel it's appropriate for. Uh, social worker across the district to lead the other social workers, and psychologists to lead the other psychologists in a team leader. Um, role, team leader position, bringing them together, together, having conversations. Um, so there'd be a stipend associated with that. Additionally, middle school sports, we've talked some and heard some information from our community about middle school sports. Middle school sports will be on the agenda for January twenty-second. Uh, we'll have some discussions about that. We put it in the budget for now. Um, and that's something that the board, you know, will have some further discussions on, but it is in in the budget to uh uh at cheerleading soccer and uh and volleyball. In addition to what we currently have, which remembers basketball and swimming. And then um, the high school stipends at the bottom last and two marching band instructors. The band itself, the parents, they've been, you probably see the collection of cans that they do. They raise uh money for themselves to, and they've been using that money to offset and support these additional um instructors to help. We feel that it's time for us as a district to support those individuals and not have it be based on cans that they they collect. That money can be better served uh to continue their collection, but to be better served to put into the program itself. So we want to uh. Two additional um stipends for a school marching band. Okay, with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Kim and uh Mrs. Davis. Um, our director of student service is gonna talk uh about the special education teacher and then those other positions from there.
So the slide is the same from our budget workshops, um, but for folks at home. Um, we are requesting an additional special education teacher at Eastline Middle School. Because um, if you remember, a few years ago, we had um, uh, we added some elementary special education teachers. That prop of children is moving to the middle school. And um, so you can see by the numbers at the bottom of the slide that the pretty. Um, fifth graders we currently have, uh, or fourth graders, we currently have transitioning to fifth grade for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year is fifty-two. Um, that's a pretty big number divided by what is currently there is just two teachers who would take on. Fifth grades. That would be caseloads of, you know, over twenty-five students per person, which is too high to effectively service um the students' needs. The numbers, um, I put the other grade levels as well, just so you can see where they sit and um. We are with eight Kivas at two special ed teachers per Kiva or per grade level. Um, at the moment, just so you can kind of see that. So they are trending up higher. So we, you know, need to look to. Um, pivoting our support from, we've been talking about elementary to middle school. The elementary um numbers are still large as they'll be uh later in the presentation of prevalence rate. Um, slide that just shows our trend overall in Eastlime is higher, even though enrollment is a little bit static, our special ed. Numbers um are up, which is not unlike many districts around us and the state. So um, so we think this is a reasonable uh request to maintain, um, you know, appropriate services for our students. Alrighty, and then um, in order to support programming um. For some of our specialty programs, um, I am putting in this request for a uh. Halftime, an additional halftime board certified behavior analyst. We affectionately call them a B C B A. They support our students um on the autism spectrum or with significant behavioral concerns. And the teachers that work with students on a day-to-day basis, so sort of like the speech pathologist or an occupational therapist. They specialize in behavior. We have two full-time currently. We'd like to um have the opportunity to have one of those positions be a more leadership role. In order to train and build infrastructure around um for the paras. And so that person then would need a slightly lower caseload to um. Offset that shift, and that's where the halftime B C B A uh request comes in. So. As you can see, that's the first bullet, quality programming and um paraprofessional. P D are critical um in those programs to work with students on a regular basis. Um, we do have high para staff turnover. It's an entry-level position, but it's also in those specialty programs, an intense position. So we want to build infrastructure there so that new folks see a future pathway when they start with us. Um, and then the additional B C B A would support the focus on training and supervision of those paras curriculum development within the programs. And support a program fidelity and implementation. Additionally, our two full-time B C B As already are dabbling in tier one and tier two consultation just for M T S S. For students in general education with their knowledge and expertise, and we would like them to be able to do more of that. But when their caseloads are high and intense, you know, there's only so much time in each day, so we feel like uh that would be helpful. And you can see on the bottom of that slide with my bad eyes, let's see if I can advance just, yes. We have thirty uh students across our A V A um. Cohort, which is pre-K through grade twelve. We have eighteen students in our PACE program and twenty-eight students projected to be in our therapeutic program for next year. They're already in the programs. Those are just rolling students forward. Um, so that's, you know, a significant amount of students that need that intensive programming. Um, with the support of the behavior analyst. And then on the next slide. Is the multi-language learner teacher, um, which is another area of growth for our district. Um, students who speak a language um other than English and need to um, you know, they're alert. They are acquiring English as a second language or third language. And um, the state has norms that we are attempting to follow, which is that at every forty students, we add an additional one point nine. So we are approaching that next need um benchmark to have an additional teacher. Um, in addition to that, we are um, we would be able to more effectively support our newcomer students who speak no English at all. Um, and schedule and create groups based on language proficiency rep level rather than grade level or schedule availability. Um, it also allows for one full-time multi-language teacher at each level, elementary, middle, and high. Which right now we have one person covering middle and high and one person dedicated to elementary. And um, we also have a unique um situation developing at the middle school where we have. Currently eighteen Spanish-speaking students, and the state tells us that if we have twenty, we need to offer bilingual programming. So since we have, are so close to that cusp, if we could hit the jackpot and hire an M L teacher who's bilingual. Then we would be proactively planning for both of those needs uh at the same time. So, and you can see again at the bottom of the slide, our data, um, our five-year trend. In twenty nineteen, we had fifty-one students um speaking other languages than English, and now we are up to a hundred and eight. And then that last slide is the prevalence rates for special education. Which you can see we're up to nineteen percent as of the twenty-two, twenty-three data. And you know, the state is always reporting that for us when you're behind our current. School years. And you can see the last five-year trend. So we're usually right neck and neck with the state. We have risen a little bit more. Think that's because we offer quality programming. Um, with a highly engaged parental community. Um, and you know, my staff tell me there must be a bulletin board somewhere, um. A billboard somewhere that says, come to Eastlime if you need special education support, which I am both proud of and humbled by, but. Understand the stress that that could put on our system, so um. That's, I guess I'll turn it over to Annalise for a little more about the Rite reader.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. Double it up. Um, good evening, everybody. Um, so one of the major drivers within my cost center. Um, as you'll see in instructional supplies, is to support the um implementation of a primary resource at the literacy level. Um, and so I just wanted to remind the board of some of the state legislation that's um. Helping to guide us in this direction, but also take this opportunity to review the very. Um, thorough timeline that Eastlime has taken in order to make a um well-thought-out decision moving forward. And then talk a little bit about the numbers. So many of you might remember um this language that came out in legislation um back in twenty-twenty-two, almost two years ago. And essentially it calls on districts um to implement a K-three reading uh curriculum model program or. Model or program that's approved by the Connecticut State Department of the edu- of education. In addition to that, we needed to um actually uh implement an assessment, uh, a screening reading assessment to identify K-three students below reading and. Proficiency in reading, and we've already done that. So that component is behind us. Um, we've implemented that for this year, but now we really need to make this determination for a reading program. So let me just take a few minutes to very quickly walk you through a two-year timeline. Um, so we started this journey two years ago when the legislation came out. Um, and. I pulled together little the literacy specialists, and we started to really look at. Other states who are well ahead of Connecticut and going in this direction and looking at their curriculum and program vetting rubrics. And we um use those as a model to develop our own internal vetting rubric. We had actually a phase one and a phase two rubric. And we use these to start looking at programs we thought the state might put forward for adoption. So we really tried to get out ahead of the state. Knowing that once uh, you know, this, we know that sometimes decisions can be really short and quick. And that's never really good place to be. We want to be in a place where we've had time to um. Thoroughly look at our options and make it an informed decision. So. By the fall of twenty-twenty-two, we um had already started to look at programs, but we um. We were completed vetting all of the approved programs that the state had put forward at that time. And we had identified two programs in which we were interested in. Um, if you remember, my view was the first program that we piloted, and that happened in the winter of twenty-twenty-three. Um, and that was a eight-to-twelve week pilot, um, roughly speaking. Um, and at the end of the pilot, the committee decided that um we wanted to try on a different shoe. So uh, we went back and we went and piloted our, the program that came in second in our um initial vetting process, which was. Expeditionary Expeditionary Learning or E L. So uh, we just wrapped up that pilot at the end of December, and I will tell you that um. If it were between those two programs, we would have gone with E L as our pro- as our adoption. But the state um threw us a little bit of a curveball, which we're kind of used to now. Um, and had actually approved additional programs based on waivers that other districts had written. And so um, the state had put forth two additional options that were feasible for Eastlime. We brought our committee back together, um, did an expedited um phase one review of those two programs. And very quickly learned that only one of them was worth uh moving forward with a pilot for here. And Eastlime, and it's actually what the state calls a compendium. So it's a combination of different things. Foundations is one of those which we already use. Wit and wisdom is the comprehension component, um, which is uh. You know, um. I would say it's a very similar similar format. In fact, use some of the similar resources as E L does. And then um Hagerty with some of that phenomic phenomic awareness that you saw in the carpet a couple of uh weeks ago. And geodes, which is a um decodable text. So with all of those resources together, this compendium can be an approved resource moving forward. So we are going to move forward with that pilot starting end of January, third and final pilot. And at that time, um, I feel as though we will be in a very, very good position. Um, to have the best fit shoe for Eastlime as it relates to a literacy program. That's going to meet um the needs of our students, but also allow align to our values in terms of um instructional practices in the classroom. And is in compliance with the state. But most importantly, is grounded in research around the science of reading and in doing what's in the best interest for our kids here in Eastlime. And so we plan a full implementation for the fall of twenty-twenty-four. Um, so what those numbers look like, um, so I have budgeted within our. E L P S budget, uh, a hundred and twelve thousand for what we call trade books and consumables, and these numbers are coming off. Um, the E L adoption, I will say if we go in the wit and wisdom direction. Um, it will be a little bit more expensive, but I'll talk to you about what that will look like if we need to do that. Um, twenty thousand dollars in professional development, that's for first-year implementation. Um, so that's already in the budget, ready to go. Um, we also, because we um, we didn't write a waiver and we opted into uh moving forward with the state, have received eighty-two thousand dollars from the. State in grant funds, which has helped in offsetting the cost of pilots. But also can help with some wiggle room if we go forward with a more expensive program. So right now, we're looking at the projected cost of full implementation between a hundred and fifty and two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, and so I feel really comfortable with the number that's in the budget right now. Of aligned to um implementation, and if we move forward with a more expensive program. We can roll out the implementation in phases. We don't need to do all of this at once. In fact, it's probably not good practice to do that. So I think with this number, I'm very, very comfortable with moving forward with either wit and wisdom and E L. Implementation, and we will make adjustments accordingly. I'm going to pass it back over to Jeff.
Continued to roll through those seven.
Yeah, I got you. Yep.
So um, at the December workshop, we were talking about uh grants. And uh, Bill made a good point, Bill there made a good point about what were our, uh, what are grants look like uh that we had applied for the previous year. So we went back and looked into that further. And this slide depicts what we had received for twenty-two, twenty-three. Uh, totaled about a hundred and five thousand, a hundred and eighty-seven. That does not, these grants do not include in our E C S or educational cost sharing, of those bigger grants, I D A grants. This is just grants we, you know, gone out and seeked, uh, you know, without having a grant right. This is just grants we've gone out and seeked, you know, without having a grant right. All work on the app, Leece, Kim, Mariana. So that was twenty-two, twenty-three, just to do a look back. Because that was a good point that Bill had made, you know, what did we previously receive? Because we were talking about the grants that we received for this year. Which some will roll into two thousand twenty-five and up to two thousand twenty-six. So we went from a hundred and five thousand in grant funding. To one million, twelve thousand, nine hundred ninety-eight in grant funding. So that's a significant difference in additional dollars that we were able to go out. Where it is for and receive. And now are, we are implementing this this year and rolling forward. And we want to kind of talk about. Some of the impact of of those grants, because this, these are dollars that are not in our operating budgets. So we're bringing forth staff, programs, et cetera, through grant funding rather than through our operating budget. So what are these grants doing, you know, for E L P S? The next slide there. So staffing supports, one of the biggest one is the mental health grant that we received. Where we have been able to hire an additional psychologist at the high school. Very qualified individual, great hire. She's been working this year, fitting in nicely with, you know, the team over there. Been doing some really good work. So that's been a great addition, you know, to the high school. We've talked a lot about our pathways. And the educational programming and expansion, you know, that has occurred. That will continue and we've got a lot of grant funding and Dave Fasulo has led the charge on a lot of, a lot of those grants. Expansion, programming expansion as it pertains to, you know, middle school, high school, tutoring supports and P D training. We have the tutor and high-dose tutoring grant that we received, which those tutors are now in place. We met with them last week. And they're rolling as of today with the middle school. So that is underway, working with our middle school students to help. With with recovery from COVID still. And then supplies. Grants are helping to support, you know, equipment, computers, lab items, pathways, materials. E M T course supplies. That's an expensive course, you know, that we're now offering at the high school. A lot of supplies go along with that and grants are offsetting that cost. So it's not coming out of our pocket or out of the pockets of students. That leads to community partnerships as well and the growth there. We've talked a lot about, you know, Furman's Garage. Furman's Garage has now led to accredited class, you know, for twenty-four, twenty-five. Send students over there. So we're in the process of getting that organized. The Eastern Connecticut workforce, program materials, again, that helps support the E M T. High school course, talked about the aviation and mechanics programs through the National Guard partnership. Where, you know, they have a van, they come over and they pick up our students. And they drive back. So it's, you know, no cost for us for transportation, an excellent piece. Talked about, you know, the the trade exploration with Porter and Chester Welding, HVAC, plumbing, electrical, Mystic Seaport, supporting students that. Are part of our therapeutic learning program at the high school. Where they go off and they can do some team building activities. That's been the premise of the Mystic Seaport grant. And then the electric boat partnership exploring, you know, the trades and that's elementary, middle and high. We talked about elementary, cheese crackers with the cheese in the middle and welding, putting together. So some exciting things that are happening at all levels as it pertains to the partnership with Electric Boat. So thanks to Jamie and Olivia, I know you both are working there, so keep that, keep that going. And then community partnerships additionally that that are also things that we're in that are in process of working on, learn standards of the sound. That grants students are obtaining, you know, critical knowledge about long and sound. We've talked some about the regional remote learning project. Our next meeting is on Friday of this week. Where, you know, we've got the seven districts, we surveyed our high school staff. And our high school staff members, a fairly high percentage of them are interested in teaching a remote learning class in the evening or in the morning. So we're at that next meeting, we'll be talking about the next steps of surveying students. The M O U between the seven districts is completed. So this is something that's ready to go for next year. So we'll begin to push those course offerings out across seven districts. And then the regional core sharing of the E M T course. Right now we're offering it to Waterford and Lyme will vine. They're both interested. They would pay a small tuition fee and they've got students that want to come to the high school. That would be during the day. It's become first thing in the morning to that class. And and then go back to their respective school. So we're just working through some of the red tape with that piece. So we want, those are things we want to continue to grow, continue to shift into, and that's the work that a lot of these grants help to support. The C H C Community Health Center, Student, Student-Based Health Center. You know, this is kind of taking longer than we thought. I was hoping it would be up in the fall, but hopefully soon, you haven't heard anything further, Deb, right? I thought January, the C H C program. An email today, okay.
Asked us to identify our first couple of students. There's meeting where. They need to do an inspection of the roof.
Okay.
Within the next few weeks.
So within the next few weeks, that should be up and running. Again, the space is identified. The staff member is hired from the outside as well. So we're ready to go with that. So as Deb. Mrs. Kelly just mentioned, we're in the process of identifying students. And that that piece, C H C, will bill, you know, families insurance, you know, for that, for that cost. And then lastly, this is a big one. Have to, we might, this will warrant some conversations that won't have the impactful improvements. We, myself, Dr. Lund, Mrs. Stevens, we met with. Our first selectman, Mr. Cunningham, as well as town finance director and talked through these capital items. We have some pretty big-ticket items, the, and they're all outlined in narrative format. In your budget books, you can, you can read through them for the more specifics. And and Chris has talked about some of these at various meetings, but. The Aquatic Center, we're now at a place of a roof replacement rather than a roof fix. Way too much money for the fix, as Chris had outlined in one of his weekly, weekly updates. So we're at a replacement stage. It just makes more sense. So million dollars roughly for the roof replacement is reimbursable. In the state, so that's one. Keep in mind that we still are at a forty, forty-one, almost forty-one percent. Forty point seven one percent reimbursement from the state for roof projects. So that's the first roof. Why don't we just mention the other two roofs that are in here? So Niantic Center, we need to replace Niantic Center's roof. And we need to replace Lily Behan's roof. And the outlined rationale reason, they're all of age, they weren't of age, those two roofs when we did the school projects, elementary school projects. So I have to make sure we get that out to the community, because community members are going to remember, you just did elementary projects six years ago. Did you do the roofs then? No, we didn't. We did Flanders Roof, but that was it. We did not do Lily Behan's or Niantic Center. So those, those are due. Lily Behan's is a lot of moisture. You'll see a diagram in there that shows red. That's all the moisture content is. So moisture is not good underneath between the layers of the top and the structural steel. So we have those three roof replacements. The other big one is the track turf replacement, mainly the turf field. The turf was put in in two thousand and twelve. So it is of age where it gets an immense amount of use. So it's, it's time for a replacement. Chris talks a lot and Chris can share some more, you know, at any point as we roll through some further discussions about C I P, but. You know, the grass itself, the tines, or we call them tines, right? Is it the, you know, term for, that that has really gone down. So it's almost like a new turf would have a fluffier surface. It's still very safe. The impact testing has been done. There's no issues with it. But worn down that turf field, it's time for a replacement and to just resurface the track. As well, not fully replaced, but just a resurface. So you can see the cost of one point two five million. And then Chris or Dr. Lund's continued window and door replacements at the high school. As well as HVAC. The continued recapitalization plan to replace HVAC unit at both high school and middle school. That is it for capital. Now, when we talk to the first selectman. One last piece, the senior center needs a new roof. So that's four roofs. So the potential of maybe putting all those projects together was something that we were thinking about. We're doing and working with the town. So we'll see where that goes, but that will, that will warrant some further discussion. And that's, that's it. That's all we have for presentation. Any questions specific?
Questions? I don't know if you can see the room.
Yeah, can you take the slides down? You know, Jamie, do you want to? Take over that, I think that.
That's fine. I just didn't know if you could see the room.
No, if you can. And I was going to text you that. So this is generally a bad idea for me trying to do this. I figured I'd give it a whirl from here, but it's pretty hard remotely. So anyway, so Jamie, yeah, if you want to take over, that would be great.
Does anybody have any questions for any of the administrative team?
And you can also just tell me that it's in the book and I will review and then. If I'm getting ahead of myself here, let me know. I think two kind of most immediate ones that I have before really digging in are. Number one, I know that the increase in instructional supplies is mostly driven from the law. That are namely the either wit to wisdom or E L, get that correct. Are there any other software items that are notable in that? Line item?
Instructional software?
Yeah.
That that would be new from last year? So yes, it has to do with textbook. Our textbook. Replacement. So we are at the high school and the middle school trying to get back into a textbook replacement cycle. So we have two departments that are moving in that direction. So when we replace textbooks in the district or if in any department. There is a physical textbook and then there's a digital license for digital accessibility. And so. Sometimes we go full into just the digital license. And sometimes we do just the hard copy or depending on the content area, we do both. So there's probably about, I would have to go back and I'll double check the numbers. But I want to say there's probably about twenty thousand dollars in instructional software to support textbook adoption at the high school. Specifically in science and maybe math.
Okay, got it. But no other like net new programs that staff is going to need to train up on and implement?
We're really trying to get away from that, Lee.
Yes.
You know, we're really trying to back out of some of that. We did add Dino, which was the software, the monitoring. Software. So that was new this year. And then the only electronic, there is an electronic platform with the elementary literacy program for both of the programs I spoke about tonight. But those are included in the purchase of the consumables. So that is not in the instructional software line item because it comes with. It's almost like it comes with a package deal kind of thing.
Oh, great. Yeah. And then my second one was around, I mean, the staffing items were pretty clear to me as far as the asks and the rationale and. Class sizes. It did spark for me. I remember, you know, last year we had moved from having one. Elementary technology teacher in each building to just one or two.
Two.
Kind of splits. And I, I'm curious, I'm guessing because there is not an ask for an additional, that that kind of. Adjustment was effective, but just wanted to loop back and make sure that that hasn't left any sort of gap in our. Tech instruction at the elementary level.
I, I have to give credit to the, the building principals as well as some of the special area teachers in the elementary schools. Who worked really hard at scheduling to make that work across all three buildings and we have. We're running the program as if we would with three, with effectively with two. So there is not a need to add a third at this moment in time. Anyone else?
I'm looking at whether our multi-language learners and the numbers that are coming up, are you anticipating that we would. House them in one building if we're looking to hire?
With the bilingual?
Right.
Um, no, this is old habit, right? With the mindset everywhere. So the number that would support the bilingual programming is at the middle school. So I would, you know. Beg for space there, which I know is getting tight, but that's where the bilingual programming would happen if we need to pull that straight.
But then you also said there was going to be work in elementary.
No, there's a, so we have two full-time multi-language learner teachers right now.
Right.
One covers elementary, all three. One covers middle school and high school. So if we are able to add the third teacher, then. One person will just keep covering the elementary, one will cover middle school, which will include that bilingual programming, and then one will cover the high school.
So the one at the elementary is an itinerant?
Not itinerant, but travels.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, full-time. It's a full-time position.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Currently two full-time.
I understand that. Okay, thank you. Anything with other one?
Um, not yet.
Okay. Does anyone else have a question?
Uh, thanks. You were speaking about the, some of the purchases for equipment. Of purchases with the grant money for E M T. Are those, like, that's an outright purchase or is it a contract to rent? What it would?
No, those are outright purchases, materials that are need, like for the E M T class, for instance, what the students will need to. That the scope.
Cots, their, their cots or the beds were pretty.
No.
Cots, the beds for like.
Yeah, yeah. Exactly, that are going into the room. So those materials that make the program what it needs to be for. For those students to successfully get through the entire year of a, of an E M T class, of course.
That comes into E L P S. And then is there, so that is their equipment that then is. Associated with running the class and then individual student-specific add-ons that they need. That are being supplied, like you mentioned stethoscope or things like that. Are those, like, they come as a bundle with the class or are we?
Well, we would.
We need to address each student with their own.
Yeah, we're almost, we're almost outfitting each student with what they need for success in the class rather than, you know, and that's not coming out of the operating budget. We're using the grant funding to offset that. For what each student is then, students Waterford and Lyme will be paying as part of their tuition. That will cover the cost of those materials as well.
Yeah, that was a clarifying question for me. So thanks, that answers it.
And then, you know, for the welding piece, Dave Fasulo is looking for a small, like welding simulator component. I think that's what it's called, to go into the, the tech room that we have here. But yeah, it's like, it's like a welding booth, like a practice booth. So we can actually have one onsite here, so we go offsite. Which is much more involved, obviously, using the tools. So she got some, some work here that can be done as well.
That's great. I can't imagine that could be cheap, maybe.
Yeah, yeah, but that's, there's where those grant, you know, those grant funds are, are going to.
Um, so for the insurance. Um, that you were talking about, what, like, there's eight percent and ten percent number, can you just put those in context a little more, like, what does that look like?
So that's the general overall insurance rate increase that the state is putting forward. So we are in the, the state partnership plan versus being self-insured. So we're in with the town together. So the town has, and we, we will work and eventually come up with what same number will be for an increase. But the state sets that rate, the state partnership plan will set that rate. So we're still in flux as to not knowing where is it going to lie. Given the recommendation for the increase to be between the three and the seven percent, but we put in. High, just in case they come back and say, oops, nope, sorry, it's, you know, we don't want to go back up. So that's why we're high right now. We want to be able to creep it back down. To lessen the dollars that we're perspective. So we hope, I hope it'll drop between the five and seven. That's why we kind of went down to five as a scenario. But each percent decrease saves us roughly seventy-two, seventy-three thousand dollars.
Okay, so it's, it's like three to seven percent of what?
We've said, the, the total cost of insurance, the total cost, cost increase for insurance from one year to the next.
Gotcha, okay.
Going in the next year, the state is going to be charging as the, the, the cost of it is going up by, we have right now by ten percent.
Okay.
Hopefully we'll drop down. So the total cost of insurance.
That makes sense.
If you have another one, go ahead.
I have, yeah, I have another question. For the cost to implement the literacy program, you said it was like a hundred and fifty to two hundred?
Right now it's looking between a hundred and fifty to two hundred and twenty-five thousand, depending on the program that we go with.
Okay, and then there was a grant on that slide. How does that factor in?
So right now we've been utilizing some of those funds to offset the cost of. The pilots, because the pilots don't, some of the pilots don't come free. Um, but.
Gotcha.
So essentially that would, moving forward, whatever's left in that would provide us with a buffer depending on which program we go with. So that's why I'm really comfortable with that hundred and fifty number. And then that professional, that, but, oh my gosh, that grant, those grant funds can be used for two purposes. The purchase of instructional supplies or software program, programming that are aligned to. State-approved programming, including the curriculum program and the assessment programs. As well as any professional development that we pay to an outside vendor, the vendor that the. Program is tied to for, you know, job embedded professional development in district. So, you know, we could utilize those funds over the course of the next couple of years. They're not a one and done. So I feel as though we, it will help to offset future costs associated with implementation down the line.
Like a credit almost, like, that you could use later to implement?
Yeah, it won't last forever, but um, it's, you know, it's a two, we, we have two years to spend the funds. So whatever we don't spend this year, we have a full year next year to spend. So, um, I, I do feel as though it's a, you know, if we. It'll help offset the, the, if we go over a hundred and fifty, it'll help offset cost of purchase of supplies. Or it can just, you know. Support implementation a year down the road, um, and just, you know, help to offset the operational budget. So, either way, that's, those are, those are the plans on how to use those funds. And the state's intention behind it is to reduce the burden on districts that this implementation is having.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, following up on that, Annalise, is there one that you feel good about?
I feel good about both, um, E L and Wit and Wisdom. I really do. Um, I, I am, you know, this has been very stressful for.
Absolutely.
All of us, and um, shout out to the elementary pilot teachers and the um, literacy specialists and the building principals who have been. So dedicated to this process. I was really worried about what the response would be on moving forward to a third pilot, but they're like, we have to do it. We have to do it. This is the right thing to do. There was no question. And with that being said, you know, um. The programs are, uh, they're robust, and I think that's what's gonna be the hardest thing in moving towards implementation. Is getting, you know, getting through them, because they are just, they are so rich in terms of resource. But that's what my job is in relation to the coaches, is to help reduce that burden for teachers. Both of them are very quality programs. Um, I'll be interested to see what happens after this third pilot.
Well, we were really sold the number on Lucy Cockens McCormick's programs too, for years and years. Then we have a whole generation of people who can't read. So, you know, the, the work you're doing is so very important, so.
Yeah, and I will say that in relation to these grant funds from the state, um, we as a district are required to um, engage in what's called the. Literacy leadership professional development series. So once a month, a team from Eastlime, um, including Kim, um, classroom teachers, special education teachers, building principals. We are in this really, really intense full-day training that is helping us develop a five-year literacy plan for Eastlime. So it's really, really. What's that?
Is it monthly?
Monthly meetings. Yeah, so by the end of this year, we should have authored a five-year literacy plan for um, Eastlime.
Wonderful, thank you.
Yeah.
And then my next question is cycling back to what Olivia just asked about the state partnership program. Is that something we're locked into, or is that something that we can opt in? Was it a three-year plan, a five-year plan, or?
No, it, it goes year to year, but you would have to, and there's a component of. Contract negotiations that just language, um, for, for changes, uh, the town, again, as part of it, you'd have to have. And we collaborative approach, um, for discussing, you know, any change, but, uh, I, I mean, we were. Self-insured for a number of years in Eastlime. The reason we went to the state partnership plan, and you remember, I think you're on the board yet. Turns it up like twenty-four percent of an increase. Was there thirty, okay, so, by the twenty-fourers, but yes, that's right, so it's upwards of.
Thirty, it was like twenty-four on one year and then like thirty.
Yeah.
Well, I heard, I've heard a lot about that, but then the other thing is that Lauren does a nice job of regionally.
Yeah, they have a collaborative, yep.
And.
We looked into that.
Of course you did.
There's some caveats with that, um, but we did, you know, we did approach that and look into that, uh, last year when.
I just wanna bring it up because I know it's.
So, yeah, yep, absolutely. Looking at options, um, so maybe I think we, people, our staff, people have been happy, I think, for the most part with, um, the state partnership plan, what service we, we receive. For health insurance, however, it's always good to continue.
Absolutely, absolutely. And then how, what are case loads like for special ed teachers, like the fifth grade kid, um, special ed teacher, you said? Tw- fifty-two kids coming in and two teachers, so, well, what does their average case load look like?
Well, so this year, the fifth grade teachers are at, I think, nineteen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, depending on new referrals that, you know, the number changes. Over the course of the year, so they are um, higher than we would like them to be. Um, and then, you know, we try to keep things around, I always say, you know, if you're starting around thirteen and you end around sixteen, that's kind of manageable. But there's no rule about.
I don't know.
Yeah, so it, it ebbs and flows, but yeah.
Yeah. If I don't ask, I won't know.
Yeah. Jill, do you have any questions? No, okay, Eric, do you have any questions?
Well, kudos to giving money to the high school marching band. I speak about there, the first and the thirds, I mean, we collect our recyclables for them too, and they're. It can be freezing cold outside, and they're still happy to recycle your cans, and it goes up to ten cents now.
That's right, that's right. You got a hard-working parent group that supports and staff, but, um, you know, they're, they're. Long overdue, uh, of receiving, you know, those, uh, those, those traditional stipends.
Anybody else?
One more curious thing about the social worker psychologist, speech pathologist, team leader, is there going to be one who manages? All three of those groups?
For each area, so one social work, one school side, one speech, because we have five to six, so, you know, or seven. T, um, of those individuals.
Sure.
Um, in each, you know, across the district, so there'll be district-level teams. They already meet with me. Um, at, at least, we try for once a month, sometimes it's more like once every other month, but I'd like them to be able to, like teachers. You know, have that opportunity to um, have a leadership opportunity and, you know, um. Uh, work with their team a little more often. Be good.
More to discuss. So we'll circle back on the twenty-second, then we'll have that as an agenda item, the budget, um, the teacher's budget, and we can open it up for further.
The next item on the agenda is the Board of Education Committee assignments.
Yeah, so I just, yeah, I just had one quick comment on it as we go through it, so, um. You know, we, we made a number of changes last year, we had some shift around, so we tried to, I think for the most part, you'll see it's fairly static. Um, from, for this year, and obviously with, with the additional board members filling spots. And, but, well, I think what's important, and, and, and especially new board members, old members probably know this, but, you know, we don't fill up. The triple A F F O and, um, policy committees. So there's room that if you want to go to any of the meetings, you're more than welcome to go to any of the meetings, and as long as we're under. Under six, you can contribute as well. So if there's a meeting, if there's a particular agenda topic that you're interested in. Um, go to the meeting, you know, and, and, and attend, but, uh, wanted to just kind of see if there's any. We, we sent out the email, Carissa sent it out several times, looking for feedback, but, uh, I just want to give one more chance to see if there's any other. Questions or comments, otherwise, um, you know, this will be our, our committee list for the next year.
No, it's not down as an action item tonight, so there's no voting on it.
I think with our policy that we don't. Vote on it. Um. I think the policy was that the, the chair. I mean, obviously, within conjunction with the board, besides, I thought that's what the latest policy had kind of said. We can confirm that.
The other input on it is, well, please.
Are you talking about voting on the committee li- on the committee assignment list?
Right, Jill, yes.
Oh, we've never voted on it before that I know of, that I can recall. Just kind of.
Yeah, it says the board shall affirm by vote the committee liaison assignments agreed upon, and the chair will then designate one member of each committee to be the chair. Who will call its first meeting within thirty days. So it says we vote.
Would you read that for a, a little bit slower for us?
Says the board shall affirm by vote the committee and liaison assignments agreed upon, and the chair shall then designate one member of each committee. Who will call its first meeting within thirty days.
All right.
So we.
I thought it was always just assigned.
But you have, you, you, you have it in place, I guess you could look at it again, it's, it's policy, you can interpret it two different ways.
Well, it says that they shall affirm by vote.
Yeah, which initially, um, it's there, it's in place, it's rolled over. So then I guess. Um, Erica, you were looking at it as, it's already in place, that's how I interpreted it as well. It's in place, um. Then you're now at the point of assigning people to the chairs, getting feedback. But I guess you could vote or not vote.
Why don't we, we can just, why don't we just bring it to the twenty-second meeting and, and put it as action and, and approve it, or. We could probably consent to jet, if there's no concerns, we can just cons- put it in the consent agenda test.
Good idea. Let's not make it difficult.
Eric, are you still taking the poll here, or am I taking over?
Oh, if you ca- if you want to take over the rest, that would be great. I actually, I'm sorry, but I'm gonna have, I was just gonna text you guys, I do have to drop. Um, so if you want to take off, so I'm gonna drop off.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, everyone. Bye.
So the next, um, item on the agenda is the superintendent's report.
Uh, so a couple of quick follow-ups to just the week, the update that went out on, um, Friday. Um, just a reminder about the high school walkthrough, really hoping to see if we could get some, uh, for participation, and we've talked about that a couple of times. The two days were the thirtieth and the thirty-first of January, I've heard back from some of you. Uh, if you can make one of those work, let us know, uh, which one is better, and then we'll see where we get a larger group, and we'll, uh, we'll decide from there. It would be in the morning, in the week of today, out, and the two different times, they were a little different each day, but hopefully we can get a, uh, together. Um, and walk through so we can see, it's been, wow, some of you have kids in the, you know, the high school, some, some do not, so. You get to see, uh, you know, classrooms, class sizes, et cetera. That's part of the discussion. Uh, also, February fifth, uh, we're planning on a retreat. Um, Eric, you mentioned that, uh, like to circle back and do a, uh, a retreat, just to bring us, or bring the board back together with two new members on it. So I'll work with Eric on, you know, kind of a retreat agenda as well, and we'll be pushing that out in the near future, so just, we would. Uh, that's a meeting night too, a regular meeting night, so we would have a regular meeting, a shortened meeting, and then we roll into the retreat afterwards.
Starting at six?
Well, we would start the regular meeting at six, and then probably retreat roughly at seven to follow, basically, so we'd want to put a time to it, it would just be regular. Retreat follows the, um, community, the whole source follows the regular meeting. And then, um, we talked with Salem, um. No co-op meeting, there's a co-op meeting scheduled for the twenty-second, co-op meeting is, uh, has been canceled, so we'll circle back. With Salem's Board of Ed for the co-op meeting, we typically do, we usually just meet in May, yeah, May, June, somewhere in there, that timeframe. And, um, so no, no co-op meeting, it'll just be the regular on the twenty-second, which gives us more time to. The, uh, budget discussions, and we'll have, we'll, we'll sports that night, so the next meeting will be fairly busy, uh.
Don't we usually put together our tuition numbers on that night? So what does that mean?
We have.
Usually we like reconcile the books and the tuition and stuff with them.
That is a co-op. As I say, we do it separate, is, you know, we do ours, they do theirs, kind of, and then we spring it forward.
That's awesome, I'm gonna send, so we just fit, got the audit, so I'll have the final audited E F S, so I'll just, there were. There weren't any, there was one change, but that does not impact the initial calculations, so Kim already has my initial calculation, the un-audited.
They don't have.
Oh, yeah, sorry, yeah.
Two different meetings. I don't see why we couldn't do it. I don't know if there's anything in the bylaws with that, the law, agenda.
Go back and, and check.
It's quick, but I don't know if it's in our co-op bylaws that we have to have it, is what I'm saying. Yeah, I'd have to, I don't, I haven't looked at those in a long time.
We'll go back and check the bylaws to see.
Yes, I just want to make sure we're being, I'm sure we're doing it above board.
Because I know Kim reviews it in advance anyway with, with the board in Salem, so, and her and I always together and, and make sure, you know.
Well, we obviously, we haven't looked at those bylaws in a long time, so I don't know if there's something in it that says we have to do it together.
Yeah.
Sorry, I didn't even know.
No, that's a. Good mention. Um, we'll check that, and then we can get back. See if there's anything, believe so, that'd be a good thing, we'll check. Um. Another thing I, I mentioned about the P T A meetings as well, so just trying to get more information out. Also, we've got a parent advisory council meeting this coming Thursday, uh, so for our new board members, um, I have a, uh, parent advisory council. It's, uh, two parents, uh, from each school, um, and our admin team, we come together quarterly, and just. This agenda Thursday, we have a supply of, um, we talk about various components from, move pathways update on Thursday. Uh, you know, this might mention of the reading program, um, we've, we've done different, uh, different scenarios, we talked about infinite campus in the past. So, it's just a nice way to connect with, uh, some parents, um, that's been going on for, well, my ten years, nine years, sir. So that will be Thursday, um, that was, uh, and that was it, we'll go back to you on some of these other things in the weekly update Friday. Bylaws, and in fact, we'll look at that, uh, that music, uh, as well.
I didn't, I didn't mean to create.
Yeah, no, it, it's an easy, we'll check, and those are the things we put, we follow up and put into the weekly updates, so you can kind of see, so the whole board is in the, uh.
I guess, for that parent, um, meeting you have on Thursday, is there board representation there, or like?
You know, there has been sometimes in the past, uh, because it runs at ten o'clock in the morning, um, and issues to attend, uh. So there's, board members are, you're welcome, if you ever want to, uh, if you ever want to attend, um, and you're free, um, could have a board. It works out, uh, timing-wise. Just the way it's always, it's always run, but, um. Yeah, so. So that was it.
Um, so we have an upcoming evening event that I want to put on your radar, I'll include the flyer in this week's, um. Update, but it's, uh, uh, Screenagers, Growing Up in the Digital, Digital Age, I don't know if any of you have heard about. Uh, this documentary, but it is, uh, it's a, um, it's done by a pediatrician who is sort of. Struggling with, um, her daughter getting a cellphone for the first time, um, in the high school. And, um, and then they sort of just, um, document different scenarios, there's a, a, a component on gameplay. Um, you know, it's essentially how the struggles, um, kids and families have in growing up in a very. Um, digital space, um, screen time. Um, growing up in the digital age, like I said, I'll put the flyer in, um, we, it's open to all families, and we are encouraging families of. Um, uh, school-aged children, grade four and up, to attend with their parents. Um, Sarah and I are, um.
We're hosting it today on Facebook.
Did you? Yeah, great, um, and we're gonna, um, do some sort of community conversation to follow. Um, that might be Alicia Farrell coming in, or Sarah and I are, are bouncing around a few ideas, but we'll have some sort of follow-up to the. Um, screening as well, um. So just want to put that on your radar. Um.
I just see that.
If, I'm sorry, February first, that would be helpful, the date would be helpful.
Something that you could watch on Netflix or something?
No, I had to purchase a license to screen it to the community. I don't believe that it's something you can watch on your own. So, you'll have to come. I've, I've done it before with communities, um, it's, it's a great way to ground everybody in a space where we can have an open conversation around the reality. Of what are the challenges are for families and for kids. And, um, so I think it's just a, a good time to explore that as a community here in Eastlime. Uh, it came up in a feedback survey, um, from.
How old is the documentary, or is this?
It's, it's, uh. Yeah, it's, thank you. Yeah, so it's, I mean, it's not necessarily really new, but none of, it's all very, very, still very relevant, uh, to what we're. I would say the only component we're not gonna listen to is, uh, anything around A I.
Or TikTok, or.
Right, but I mean, it's just, it's a matter of guiding, you know, guidance for families, the challenges. So in the past, Alyssa Farrell has done a follow-up around, you know. Parenting guidelines, things you can do at home to help support. Parenting guidelines, things you can do at home to help support healthy decisions around technology, both for. Ourselves as adults and being role models for our children, but also for our school-aged students. So, I'm trying to work out some childcare for, with the PTA as well, so more to come on that component, um. Or anybody, any, you know, families who have students who are younger than fourth grade.
And Elise, and Elise, what time is it? Just so I can get it my calendar now.
Yeah, it starts at six o'clock, and it'll be here at the high school in the auditorium.
Thank you.
And I know Jeff mentioned high dose tutoring, um, often running today. I just, in terms of, in the spirit of full transparency, um, our vendor Catapult has on-boarded. Seven of the twelve tutors that we need, so our high school tutoring program is going to be delayed until after midterms at this point, because it doesn't make sense. And they're still hiring, um, one of the full-time tutors for the high school. Um, and, you know, we're really eager to be fully staffed so that we can run the program fully, I did reach out to our grant contact and give him. Sort of a, uh, an update in terms of what of our, what our status is, but overall, I think it went well today, um, first day at the middle school, and uh. We're excited to really get into a space where this has got some momentum going. Um, I worked with the middle school staff and high school um, staff on offering a little Eastline orientation for. Those tutors that have been hired last week, and I think overall that went well, it's nice to meet them. Uh, give them an opportunity to get to know the building and our expectations in terms of, um, you know, what we're all about here in Eastline, so.
It makes a difference.
Yep. Mary Ellen. Any immunis updates for us?
Have training next, no, this Thursday, have training this Thursday, we're moving along. Uh, haven't heard the payroll, on the payroll piece yet, but we're moving along on the general ledger. So hopefully that'll be on track, the general ledger will be on track July first, and then payroll hopefully January first of twenty-five. I know it sounds like a long time, but it really isn't.
I feel like we've been doing munis for like, we have fifteen years.
Started, as I started.
How long have you been with us?
It'll be seven years in June, and I think it's six years. Six years. You know, we had some changes, I think I mentioned last time in my office, so everyone's in there, you know, for being retired. And, um, you know, we have a new hire in accounts payable, um. Our accounts payable person moved into payroll, we threw our first payroll last week, so everything's going well. So it'll, it's all very good shifts in my office, so it's good.
Alright, um, community reports, triple A, I don't think there was.
No.
I'm finding out. When is that? Uh, end of the month. One twenty-two, and FFO was canceled.
Yeah.
Policy.
I don't have a date though.
Personnel policy, we don't have one, and cave. I do have a cave, okay, so cave, first I want to say thank you to Eastline Middle School, Claudine, Chris Urban, and Jeff for letting us schedule. The um, legislative breakfast last weekend, I thought it was great, because I don't, can't remember us ever having one at Eastline, so it was nice to bring everybody here. Yeah, we had a great turnout, uh, we had a interesting conversation, is how I'm going to phrase what I have to say, because it's not a nice. Thing that I have to say, but we had interesting conversation with um, uh, cranky state legislator. But I will say that there are upcoming webinars, there's a webs, the webs, the Board Role and Advocacy webinar, which is January twenty-fourth. From eleven to twelve, there is a board chair check-in, uh, one twenty-two from eleven to twelve. There are three other legislative breakfasts, no, two, you already did that one. There are two other legislative breakfasts scheduled for Area Seven and Area Eight, which is Seymour and Westbrook, if anybody's interested in going to Seymour and Westbrook. For breakfast, um. But that is what I have, and just an FYI, if you do a webinar, you can sign up for it, and if you can't go, they'll send you a link and you can watch it later, so. It's always a way to get to one if you can't get to one, just sign up and watch the re- the recording.
If you need any help with that too, Chris, so we can, um, as well, my office, signing up or registering.
That's all I have for Kate. Uh, Kate, do you have any learn?
I don't.
Personnel action items, uh, board comments. I have a whole list, so.
Real quick, okay. Excited about the high dose tutoring launching today. At some point down the road in the future, I'd love to learn a little bit more about how we're tracking the effectiveness of this initiative. Um, and then kind of, yeah, like what the milestones and timeline, timeline is there, be good to learn more.
No problem. What else?
Um, going, I got along with the uh, cave, uh, breakfast, I, I also went to, uh. So the discussion was mostly about the right to read, um, and uh. And uh, and there are the other boards and districts frustration, and, you know, about their waivers, getting the night and whatnot, and they're really. Uh, reminded me of the great work that that you have led on doing this, and like that plan that we have, so now we're not scrambling. That we got a waiver tonight, and now we have to figure, um, we have six months to figure out, so thank you so much, and kudos for. I will, that our strategic plan that is made up.
Yeah, it's when you get together with all the other boards and you hear their frustration, you're thankful for it, at least.
Well, listen, it, it was a team of people that were.
No, I hope it's put together the team that helped get us to where we are, so.
Appreciate that, thank you.
It's nice to not be as frustrated as other.
It's nice to go into a decision really feeling very confident and comfortable with next steps. So, it's just where you want to be when you have to make decisions like that, so. I feel for some of the other districts who are in.
Especially one that might have just started a brand-new program, and it doesn't meet the requirements. And you spent all this money on it, and now you have to shift or change, that's where a lot of the frustration is.
That's frustrating.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody else before I?
Well, with the, um, public content, these are new assignments, these people who just got hired, and then. We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Yeah, personal action. So we, we recently hired four people, and then the number one, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Yeah, it's a standard, it it would just always report that out every meeting, who's left us, who's, you know, who we brought in, sort of thing to. Replace, um, so you can see the assignment setting. Yeah.
Alright, so I, my first one is the water, I don't know about, a lot of you got the little notice in the mail about your well. Um, and one of them being Flanders well, have we reported out to the Salem parents that the Flanders well, does that affect the high school students?
I didn't, I didn't know that there was a Flanders well, was impacted, I didn't know.
My letters, Niantic and Flanders. So.
I didn't see specifically the schools, you're gonna.
Well, it said Niantic's well and Flanders well, so I'm assuming it's the Flanders end of town, I could be wrong.
It's two wells that have been contaminated, and there's five wells that they draw water from.
Yeah.
So my question was, is, is, do we need to contact Salem parents to let them know that there's a well in Flanders that may affect the high school?
We talked to Dan Cunningham.
I would just, just because I got the paper and I was like, ooh, Flanders, I said, we might want to talk to the high school parents.
Yeah, I mean. Well, I mean, we.
Just because they use the water, I don't know, we need to, we should, I think, we should probably let Salem parents know if their kids are having. Possible contaminated water.
Yeah, we could, I know a little bit about this, I could talk to you about it.
Sorry, it just, I got the letter this weekend, and I was like, oh wait, we should probably talk to high school parents.
Yeah, we're committing, yeah.
Uh, my second one is going off what Kate was talking about, about the personnel action item, there's a resignation. At the high school of a guidance counselor, and I'm wondering how that's going to affect seniors. With any college app processes, processes, or if that's gonna be, if there's coverage or class choices for the year. What that's going to look like.
So it's posted, uh, number one already, right away, um, there's a transition period, so she didn't already leave, she stays for.
Right, I see she's here for a little bit longer, but I don't know if that impacts college apps or.
Most of the college applications, I think, as uh, Vera said, the applications will be in by that point in time, so she's done with her letters of rent.
Okay.
Uh, and then the rest of the staff will support kids that come in with questions, if there is. I don't know whether or not there's gonna be time, then there is somebody, there'll be something coming out, we're gonna send a letter out to parents, just to. This board is kind of getting out a little bit now, uh, but we have posted it, we hope to have somebody in place as, as soon as possible, but. Be sure that the staff has already talked about this, and they have a plan to make sure that the kids are supported.
I was just worried about.
Incredibly responsible, please make sure she's tying up everything that she can possibly.
I mean, I I've known her for a long time, so I like was a little stunned to see this on here, so I was a little sad. Um, my third one is the retreat, do we know what the retreat is on? Like, is it gonna be like?
Working on the agenda with uh, with Eric, I wanted number one to bring, and I don't want to speak for him, um, he had brought that forward. Um, number one, we've got two new board members to bring the board together, uh, an opportunity, um. And he didn't want to speak specifically about goals, um, but, you know, that could be an item, uh, so let me circle back with him.
Yeah, I was just curious.
Yeah, let me, yeah, let me circle back with him to see what, uh, you know, again, we haven't worked up that agenda yet, still, you know, about a month out, a little less than a month out.
Alright, and then my fourth one is I have three fundraisers. There is an arts foray fundraiser, January twenty-sixth, put on by Niantic Center School parents, and it's going to be. At the Lime and Art Association in Old Lime, if anyone is interested. There is the Eastline High School Safe Grad Party, um, January twentieth, they are doing a comedy night at the American Legion. And the Miracle League is trying to make up for the failed Oyster Fest. And we are doing a uh, Mohegan Comedy Night also, at Mohegan Sun, so if anybody's interested in any of those, I have little pamphlets here if they. And that's all I have, I don't know if anybody else has anything. Future agenda items? Anybody want to take over my role?
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Alright, and any objections to this? Alright, meeting adjourned.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
See you on the twenty-second.
I feel like someone, you're gonna be there, you didn't. I couldn't, I don't know, I couldn't find my letter. It's the hardest, honestly, I know exactly where you are right now, I, I need to.